Go ahead and call the meeting to order and record the members present.
Wilson.
Here.
Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Bob Cog.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Morris.
Here.
Item two is consent agenda. The following items may be approved in their entirety by the board upon motion made, seconded, and passed by majority. Any member may request a separate vote on any or all items contained in the consent agenda.
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda items. Second.
Who are you writing?
Uh, Wilson. Wilson?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Bob Cog.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes. Item number four is information reports. Board candidates are our board members, so thank you guys for filing and re-upping to serve another term. Nobody filed against you, so we won't have a board election, so we saved a little bit of money on that. So yay, good bill. It's good to keep a same board. I'll be going to the legislative conference in January, same one I went to last year. This is that first time, once we've seen all the bills being filed and have been filed, to kind of get an overview and talk with some of legislators about some of the intent and the plans that they have for those and kind of get an idea where the legislative session's gonna go, so we can kind of get prepared before we get full out. Something I just got, if you've kind of watched the news or seen them in the papers, there's been a lawsuit for a while, again, it's Dakota Tax Commission, for calculating motor vehicle collections incorrectly and how they distributed them to schools. In your documents, the very first thing you have, in your documents tab, is a bunch of schools and numbers. The first page is, yeah, the very first thing in your packet. These were the districts that joined and actually filed the lawsuit and paid the lawyers. There's the amounts they're going to receive. The next page is, there's 146 districts who will have their motor vehicles. These are districts that were overpaid according to the calculations, so that amount will be withheld from them, and then it will be redistributed to the schools that were underpaid, the 263 districts. So we are, unless this somehow gets challenged in the courts, if you'll flip to the very last page of that document, you'll see freedom. We were underpaid in 1617, so we should be receiving a 13th of this, about 22,000, for the next 13 months, starting in January. So that's a, that's a good thing for us, bad thing for the districts that were overpaid and just, uh...
Those are the districts with the numbers in parentheses?
Correct. Yeah, so we can, we'll have a little more revenue than we originally expected, but it'll be spread out over 13 months, so two fiscal years, that's how we'll get it over the next year. So that's some good news.
Ms. Sheen?
I just wanted to remind everybody about our Christmas program next week. It's on Friday, December 21st. There's two different opportunities for you guys to come out and support the kids. One is at 1:30 and one's at 7:00. Hoping that that turns out really great. I know our teachers and students have been working really hard on that. Semester tests are also next week, the 18th and 19th, for the secondary students. So 7th grade up is who we do those with. So they're getting ready for that and finding out whose exempt. They've started that today, a few of them, so, of that few days. If you have a middle school aged or junior high, junior higher or high school age kid, they're gonna be doing that and will probably be saying, "Oh, I gotta take semester test," or, "Yeah, yeah, I don't have to." So be prepared and listen for that. On Thursday, December 20th, our leadership class, thanks to Ms. Teep and her students, will be holding a career fair for all of our secondary students, 7th grade up or 6th grade? We went 6th, didn't we? 6th grade up. They're getting to meet with a lot of different individuals that are coming, and I brought this with me if anybody wants to look at it later. It shows who is coming to visit with the kids. They'll be in separate different rooms and the kids will rotate. They already have lists put together of who's doing what, when and where. The students themselves were very active in this. Ms. Teep put it on them and said, "Go forth," and they have done a really good job of doing that. So I'm very proud of them and what they're doing there, and hopefully it'll just keep growing and it's something we can keep doing with them, because I think it's a great opportunity for them. Christmas break, it's right around the corner, December, that is not right, what I wrote down. Is it the 21st is our last day? So that following Monday to January 3rd, the teachers return on January 4th, and the students return on January 7th. On that January 4th, the teachers will be doing professional development. Excuse me. We'll start out with all the teachers in here doing NWEA MAPS training, so that they're what we're doing with our kids now, to test every quarter, so that they understand those reports and can use them more efficiently and make sure that we're giving the kids where we need to be on those. So everybody will be doing that. And then in the afternoon, our elementary students, student teachers, our elementary teachers will be going to a training specifically for them, dealing with Voyager, which helps our reading proficiency of our younger kids. So that'll begin, then our upper level will be doing training that's more specific to them and what they were saying that they needed with, some more for lesson plans, interactive classroom trainings and different things like that. So help them increase rigor in the classroom. And then my next thing that I wanted to share with you is our FCC LA students have been going to a couple of different events or also participated in some things within the classroom. The first one was some star events that they went to in Fairview. Two of our freshmen, one third, in their individual events, which was really good. Their first time to go out and do that, basically for this level. The others were stock market game that they were involved in, six, we had, we took six teams in it. Of those, they won anywhere from second place to ninth place out of 18 teams. So we had some really good participation in that, and our kids did really well. We have at least two kids made two teams, which is four kids at least. Maybe a couple more that, because of how well they did, will get to participate that, in that again in spring. So doing a lot of good things with them in the FCC LA and in that area. Our academic meet team finished fifth this year. Tonight was their last meet. They won one and lost one. Overall, they've won over half of their meets. I think after tonight, they were 11 and 10, so they're just a little bit over half. So the kids are learning, they're growing, and it's nice to see all that happening. So I just wanted to share all that with you guys.
Item number five, then, is General Fay's presentation, 2019 Bond Committee Report.
Well, in October, we started meeting with a bond committee to discuss projects and possible bond amounts. We met three different times. We went over a large amount of projects, trimmed them down to what the committee felt were, would be, projects that would be supported by our community. We looked at different bond amounts. All the way is, little as 5,000, 500,000, which pretty much we couldn't do very much with that, all the way up to our max of 2.1 million. And settled kind of in the middle of about a $1.3 million bond. That should be able to get what they thought were a lot of our needs and still be affordable and supported by the community. So in your board packet, you have kind of a, it looks like a spreadsheet, it's got some multiple colors on there. This was the, what the committee finally determined as their primary list, but in no way is anything final at all. It'll be now up to the board and to how we progress, what we go next. We did discuss having some public meetings in January to have some more feedback and before we actually call the bond itself. But any questions about these projects or... I think you're too far.
How far?
Too far, Rob. No document page. He's too deep. He's in the right spot, he's too far. So just realize these, these prices on here are in no way actual costs. They are best estimates. The architect, once we define what they are, the actual cost, he'll have to do a lot more exact numbers before we get it to the bond guy.
Well, I'd ask this. If there's a, say, all this on here, we wanted to do, or we wanted to change some stuff, maybe add something. What that 1.3 cost, how it pays out, say we did a series bond or something like that, is that what, to keep the payments, you know, where you're...
A series bond?
Yeah, like where you're not adding any more than what that, what is, you know, what's already there. Am I making sense?
What are you asking?
Well, like, say, the 1.3 is what the whole bond, this is here. Say we wanted to take some of this out, add some, but it would raise the cost of the order of 1.3 is what we're wanting to borrow.
Take some out, then add some.
Well, if...
Projects.
Projects.
If there's, are you talking different financing, financing options?
Yes.
There would be some. We had talked about it in the committee, some with Jordan. We never got into that process name deeper, but this is figured on a 10-year bond. We never did talk about serious bonds.
Where do the numbers come from?
Our architect.
$2 to, for leveling? It'll cost $2.
As a unit, I think, 6,300 units.
A unit cost, two units. So...
I think it's, I think that's per unit, and there's 6,300 units. So it comes up to 12,600.
So he's saying on the demo, on the existing floor, he figuring, he's figuring $2 per square foot at 6,300 per square feet is 12,600.
So our first unit is that square footage?
It, the, yeah, the unit is, what is the measurement in?
Yeah. Why do we gotta spend 300 and fit well? Okay, I see that.
Well, if that's the case, then how much is it for the contractor's overhead? Or, oh, never mind. Overhead, where's the door?
It's not on there.
The door's not on there?
No.
So down here, there's this 16,000 for Stephen L. Corp. What's that?
That's the bond fee for Jordan. When we have Jordan, we, he does all the paperwork and all the bonds. That's roughly what the fee is for having all the financial side of...
Then this general contractor says 5%, plus 47,000. What does he actually do besides line people up?
Hiring a GC, does, does the projects.
What's contingency?
Anything that we don't really know.
If something changes.
You get into something and you go, "Oh, we needed this, we didn't know about it."
Tung the wiring on the gym when the, when the roofers found it?
Yeah, that's where contingency would jump in.
So the contingency is contractor overhead. What'd you say that was, contractor overhead?
That is what Cur 3 estimated it would cost a contractor or so, any, any trade to come up here and do it extra because of the distance. That could change a lot, but he, that's why he, the project they just did on Liberal, Kansas, and that's what they're seeing.
Like 141,000 just because we're here?
It's a good guesstimate. It's, it's, probably, depending if the contractors are local or not, that is very flexible.
So could, like, Mr. Navy, could he be our GC?
I don't know.
He couldn't? How come?
He's tied in with the school. I wouldn't have the general contractor being a part of it. Something goes wrong, you want to build, go after the general contractor.
Now, you do also have something we've talked about, and I hadn't mentioned this to the board, because they were, or the board, the bond committee, and we've discussed it before. Possibly not going a general contractor route and going the construction management route. It gives a little more flexibility, but it generally costs you a little more. But you might be able to control costs more because you're a little more involved. Then once, if you do it the GC route, it's a full package, whatever the bond would be, that GC will bid it to get it done for that price. And they have every bit of control at that point, because they've got, it's all outlined. But that's something that can, we can look at later. Just determining how we actually want to proceed with getting the projects done. Once we real, we know exactly what our projects are. I think the committee worked really hard to...
So is this all the committees, this is the committee's...
This is their recommendation.
Well, like, everything except for the...
We don't, everyone pays somebody to do it. But if we're, if we're doing, if we're being frugal and doing our budgets, and we need to account for some of those costs, they're, they're gonna be there some way, somehow. We might be able to get them cheaper. But remember, this is all estimates, this isn't, these aren't hard numbers. And the ones in yellow are, could change, because I don't have the exacts on those. That's what, that's why they're in yellow. I believe the roof lease purchase will be less than that amount. I haven't got a payoff notice yet. And when I was working with Jordan, I haven't got an exact figure on what Jordan's costly.
When we say ag building here, we're talking about the one, the...
Correct.
Still basketball.
And you do realize that down at the bottom, I've got a proposed budget. And we see a bond of 1.3. We're assuming that we would get the USDA grant of 50,000 and an ORRC grant of 3,000. I know we can get the OORRC grant, that, and I know USDA, we won't know till March or April. It's possibly as late as May, when they review those applications, if we'll be approved for that or not. But we should, with it being coupled to a bond, it has a better chance of passing or being approved. But so there's, we're still, we got $3,800 with those grants figured into the budget. If not, something needs to come out. We'll get a lot of local contractors who will give us really good prices on these projects.
Yeah, there's a lawsuit up in here that's really high.
We thought the same, as we were discussing projects, thought the same thing, why is this gonna cost that? We think we can do it better, but that's, we're early in the project.
We're 14,000 for Canadian handrails.
Right.
Can't see that.
Right.
I'm still stuck on 329,000 for the contingency, the contractor overhead and the general contractor. We did. Then that would be Cur 3.
What?
The general contractor.
No, they're architects.
It would be the GC.
We don't have one. We don't, we don't, we can't have a GC until we know the projects and they submit it out for bid packages for general contractors to bid on. That's after the bond.
So... On the ag building, the ventilation system, what, what's that considered?
Currently, we only have that one exhaust fan in there. If we're welding and stuff, it need, we need more air movement. And that would be putting in another one, and then the louvers on the north side.
What about the door that's supposed to go in there?
We're trying to do that locally, out of local money. That's a later agenda.
But with that door in there...
That 18,000 or a bid or something like that, I saw, yeah.
But if we did do the door, that'd take care of the ventilation problem, wouldn't it?
It'd move air.
What about days when it's, maybe it's cold outside? You have an exhaust fan, so pull it in somewhere.
Hey, that's all just getting banned now, don't you think? Radio stations are taking polls on that. But this is just something for you guys to look at. Obviously, there's no decisions to be made here tonight on this. It's just an effort to answer questions if you had from the committee. Basically, from this point on, we will work with our architects and James and Jim to begin to schedule some public meetings. We need to schedule something in January. And the most advisable at this moment is to, if we want to proceed, is put this on the April ballot, which means we would have to know our projects and call the election by the first week of February. I forget the exact date.
Can we talk, can we use that, that bid in here as an example? Can we talk about it now or no?
About the door bid?
Yeah.
It's on the agenda, yeah.
So my, my thing is, all of this stuff, is just like that other bid that we got, the one in the email. Is it in here? But we still bring it up, right?
Yeah.
So it was 40 grand, correct?
Correct.
And here's one for the same thing, for 18.
Yes.
So my thing is, I feel if we can go, I think we can get a lot of this for half. I mean, I'm just seeing a lot of things in here.
It all depends on the bids coming in. I agree with you. I think a lot of this is high, but until we go out...
Would you rather be high on your, on your estimates, or would you rather be low?
Well, my thing is, if we go, if we're gonna run the bond, if there's other things that we might need, you know, I mean...
I, I think what, I think I know where you're headed towards. My suggestion, you know, we know the amount, 1.3. We have a list of projects and then have contingency projects. If these, all this other comes in under budget, then we will keep, we will do this one next, and this one next, and this one next.
My thing is, it's hard to come in under budget whenever, the way these bonds run, when you run the bond, people know what you're willing to spend. So if I was a contractor, I'd come there, well, they already said they're gonna pay 10,000 to put a toilet seat on, that's what it's gonna cost. You know what I mean?
I, I do. That's one of the...
I don't like that, but my thing is, just like this door, we could have put this door on a bond and said, "Okay, we're allowing 50 grand for it." We would, we never would've known, we could've got that for 18. So there's a lot of little things in here, is all I'm saying, that looks like we could at least check into first.
The, you all, you have the option when bids come in, especially if you... Depending which way we go back construction. The board has the final say on approving the bid or not. If you don't, if you think all the bids are too high, you can reject them and go back out for bid again. Or, you know, if, we've done that before on some other bonds. So if you, if they come in and the bids are too high, mm-mm, go back out. The biggest thing that will help us is to make sure we know, we get the word out and we get people to, to bid. The more bids you have, the lower the price becomes. So you will always have that option to reject bids on projects.
Which, but we, we get the bids after the bond's approved, correct?
Yes, you have to have the bond first before you can get a bid.
That's, that's where my, my's getting nervous, because if you got it done, I mean, then you sit there forever and keep rejecting these bids.
But the, the money sits in the account, but you have to do the project, you just, it's not, the, the bond overall price is set. You know, you know your budget. As the bids come in, oh, no, that's our budget. We think we get less. We're rejecting these bids. You go back, doing the gym, but you've got your money ready.
Is there like a time limit on the...
You do, is basically three years because of interest, but other than that, you want to get done quicker than three years, but...
Yeah, because once it's approved, the money is, I mean, we don't want to be paying interest on somewhere on.
No, we actually get the, we get interest on it, but if it's over three years, then we have to pay, we have to pay interest back on the interest we earned on it. It, it gets really confusing. But it, it shouldn't come into play here at all. If you don't spend it and it sits in the bank and you draw interest on it...
We're drawing interest, but it's still costing the taxpayers, right?
Right, that's why if, if you draw interest on it over a three-year period, then you, you end up paying parts of it back, so that goes back to tax payer.
Oh, and this gym flooring guy, I hope that's one guy that we had come up here to do all that, I hope he can be in on it.
He doesn't replace floors.
Oh, he did?
No, he just...
Did repairs?
Oh, the one before I got here? That did the new one, or did the...
The one that repaired the damage.
Yeah, it was before me. I don't know who that, that was the guy out of Kansas. That was the year before I got here.
Sorry, I can't remember that. I'm not, I remember coming, but I can't know where he's from.
I can't either. I think he's pretty decent.
We'll put it out, I mean, it's public bids. But is everybody okay with timeline as far as...
I'm good with it.
Running this in April, using the month of January, having some public meetings?
Is that enough time?
Architect-wise, it is.
And then the meetings with the public, it is and all that?
That depends on...
Three months?
I'm game, but I think we need to spend, we need to do something. We, this architect, I don't know. Where's his cost in here?
Right there at the bottom. Kind of, kind of peach. 6%? That's normal. I've seen him as high as 8. So... And of course, if the projects come in under budget, that, that number goes down. It's just a percentage.
So we can look into finding a way to maybe...
Cut costs?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Because a third of this is in things that people are getting paid to...
Oversee.
Yeah, and we see how that works. We asked that guy, somebody who was here at the time about USNR. What school? Probably for the GC. I thought they said it would be, I thought they said...
Not GC, the other one.
What's that?
Construction.
CM?
Yeah.
The construction manager was gonna be more expensive, wasn't it?
It easily is.
But could he not use local, like, I want to say local, rather than worrying about coming from the city or wherever, so far away that we gotta spend the, where's that?
It all depends on who bids. This is what he just, this is what James told me about the project in Liberal, that they just bid. All the local guys were considerably higher on the bids that they submitted, and it was a, the guy that actually won the bid to build this hospital thing actually was from Altus. Was cheaper on his bid than anybody local, you know? He just said it's, if you get the right... He just said it's, if you get the right bids in, prices go down, but it all depends on bids.
You can tell off the scoreboard, you can put the handrails up.
I can do it with the bean on the scoreboard.
Hell, there we got that song.
Yeah. Hell, don't donate at times, donate at time.
So, should our next, I mean, I think we ought to have a meeting pretty quick with the board and the bond committee members did this so we can decide if these are the exact projects we all agree on in the money and then have another one.
Not the money, but projects, yes.
Yeah.
But I would agree to the money.
That's a sure do.
Well, I mean, what do you? I agree to the projects, I like the pro, I just don't like the.
The money. People upper management grabbing money, is that what you don't like?
Oh, it's been.
Democrats.
I've set through two of these deals, and every time, that's my biggest problem with it, is I do not know where they get their figures. That is just ridiculous, but I don't know how to get around it, because it's, every one of them I've ever seen come back for anything that's ever done, you're like, what is going on, on the price? So.
Liberals, I'd be better than them.
I think you did in yourself.
Yeah, I agree, you need to have a meeting.
Get that done pretty shortly before our next board meeting, should we, I think we should have a meet, we should have a meeting before our next board meeting with the, is that what you guys think?
We've already set, we're gonna be by April.
Yeah.
We gotta call it by when?
Um, for the April.
Gotta call it by February to have it on in April.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, if it couldn't be called in January, gives that more, much more PR time so that everybody in town knows what's going on.
Well, if you call it in January, then that puts it on the, or can you call it in January?
You can call it, it just, there's deadlines, you have to call it for January third to get it on the March ballot. You have to call it by Jan, February some, you can call it at any time for whatever month down further, if you're ahead. You can't call it after that date. Part of the, part of the public communication is, once you call the bond, you set the projects. So you wanna have your meetings with public before you call it, so that you've got all the input and you have the project together that will have support.
Can we run, does it cost any more to run a multi, like a, like give some people some options, you know, to vote on? Option?
You mean like two bonds?
Yeah, like they wanna do all the, everything on the list, or if they wanna, you know, that was a big concern last time, was people wanted it, they felt like they were getting forced into it.
That would be something you'd want to do before you called it, so during the month of January, if you wanted to run, do something like.
My question was, does it cost more to run a bond like that?
You couldn't run a bond like that, you'd have to be running separate bonds and defining the projects in those. 'Cause Ms. Prohance had brought that, asked that question when we had our bond guy here. It can get you, it would mean you'd running, okay, if you want three options, you're gonna run a three hundred thousand dollar bond, and you're gonna run a five hundred thousand dollar bond, or an eight hundred thousand dollar bond, but all three of those have different defined projects.
That's what we're talking about.
You would, you would have more, you would incur more expenses.
How much more?
I do not have an idea.
Well, GC for each project would be forty-seven thousand pounds three, wouldn't it?
No, I see what you're talking about, like, how much would it, I mean, if it, if it's paying. Yeah, I, I, I think we're getting lost here. You know, like, they're on an election, obviously they're not spending anything now because there's no election. If there was one board member versus two on a ballot, or, does that make sense?
Yeah, I understand what you're asking.
You want one bond project with two options?
Yeah, no, no, like.
He's confusing me.
Well, obviously, unless it's very good last time we ran the bond, because that was people's main problem. They wanted options, they said, well, we, we might not wanna vote for this, we might wanna vote for this. Meaning, you put all this right here on one bond, okay, and it's sitting there, you can vote for this, but if you don't like this here, then you can vote for this. You, you see what I'm saying, I mean, it kinda be broke up, like, from what I'm looking at here, you'd basically be looking at, I call it exterior, maybe.
Structural genazium and ag.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't structure it just like that, but, but yeah, something like that, you know.
But for the example.
Yeah, give people, yeah, let's just say, you know, obviously, you couldn't say the contingency contractor and general contractor is an option, 'cause we gotta have it, I know that.
Well, I can vote no.
That'd be, that'd be different on each, you see what I'm saying? At the end of the day, you're spending the same money, is what I'm saying. You're gonna spend this one point three five three, or one point three four nine, on the estimated bond project? Or, and with this USDA grant, I guess we kinda have a label of what we're gonna use it for, right, if we got it?
It would, it'd be with this.
What's this?
Whatever the, whatever the project becomes would be attached to the grant application.
So, basically, that'd be on there, and then you're gonna have, I mean, you, you, you're gonna have the same, like, this would be one, then you'd have structural is two, basically like a three-part bond.
Um, if I understand the way you're saying it, you couldn't run it that way, 'cause what if it all got approved?
Then it'd be for the one point three.
It would be for the one point three.
It would, it wouldn't be that. Either that, or, 'cause you couldn't run this as a whole, 'cause it'd be, this would be one bond project. If you did, broke it out, then what you're saying is you would never run this as a whole. You would be running a structural, a three hundred thousand dollar bond for structural.
Okay.
A three hundred thousand dollar bond for ADA.
Okay.
A one hundred thousand dollar bond for the Ag Building. That'd be three separate bonds, three separate ballot questions, and you'd, you would incur more costs.
So basically, we need to have a meeting with the bond people, we need to have a meeting with the public, figure out what they want, and then we come back and decide?
Yes.
In three months.
Two months, really, you need to have it all decided before, 'cause once you call it and the board approves and asks for a bond, the projects are set.
Yeah, with, for the elementary version, that's, that is what I'm talking about, what you just described. I mean, basically, splitting it up, I mean.
That would be three separate.
You're either gonna vote for this, or they're gonna vote for this, or that, but at the end of the day, they can vote for all three.
But it would be three separate bonds.
It'd cost more.
Three separate, three separate tax schedules, three separate.
But it'd still be, it'd actually still be the same amount of money?
I don't know. I don't know what those figures would be.
Well, I can give, I mean, they're right here.
No, 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 because the, the, how the bond actually works, that's not it.
Yeah, well, maybe somebody needs to explain that to us.
We can, we can get a meeting with Jordan.
And what did I just turn in, by when?
Um, when you want.
To get it on the April ballot?
Uh, it's the first week of February.
So we need to have a meeting with the bond, or the bond committee, a public meeting, a meeting with Jordan, and then come back and have our meeting.
Did the bond committee, did they meet with Jordan Smith?
Uh-huh. And.
Is that when you asked your question? Were you kinda asking the same, and what'd he tell you?
Well, he said it was possible, he said it's two different bonds. I mean, and the way he said, he'd like say you could, you know, they, you, one might pass and one might not.
Yeah.
No, we didn't go into finance, I mean.
Right.
It costs more money than not.
Well, it was near, like this, if it costs a lot more.
So the thing of it is, this is all stuff that needs to be done one way or another.
Right.
And, you know, I think our citizens will realize that, and I think this time that we're working to get the information out so everybody understands. I think we've already increased our chances of the bond being passed.
Right.
One of the suggestions from the committee was, we set some tour dates, being, being, bring people up to the building, take them on tours, let them see what we're talking about, because when you actually step back and look, it's a whole lot worse because you're actually finally starting to look. People, because we try to keep a nice facility and keep it looking well, you, you have a tendency just to overlook some of the real issues until someone goes, hey, did you really see that? And then they're, oh, oh, wait a second, okay, I got what you're saying now. That was one of the things we did with the committee a couple times. Let's go around, actually look, and it was, oh, oh, I think some of those were surprises once you really started looking.
The boss, one of my maintenance managers always said that, you know, fresh coat of paint does a thousand dollars worth of good to falling down building. Makes it look better.
And that's what we're doing, we're, we've got some real issues, and we're doing the best we can to make it as best we can. Keep it as long as we can, but we've got some needs.
Moving on to, I had a bead in the presentation that proposed to town, like, two thousand four in school.
Um, pretty much same calendar as we did last year, changed dates, changed when things are. One question for consideration, some of our neighboring districts are taking off the whole week of Thanksgiving. That is something I'd ask you guys to consider, there's obviously no votes tonight, I just wanted to get it in your hands, give you a chance to look at it, so that we can bring it back in January, improve the calendar, but at the way it's scheduled right now, we'll be going a hundred and sixty-nine days, with five professional development days, starting the same time, getting out for the same time.
She's not a kid, though.
I say we vote, get them some new tabs.
Y'all have thought they're out long enough.
So, if there's any other questions, you can let me know, but just kinda getting your hands free to be able to look over.
Okay. I'd have seen this, discussion concerning superintendent evaluation.
As you've, as you've talked on different occasions, wanting to update our evaluation tool, I know you guys have received the white paper I sent, evaluating superintendent. I highly encourage you to read it, it is forty-four pages, but only twenty-two of it's actually the article. The other twenty-one, twenty-two pages are bibliography and references and some of that, it's, it's much smaller than it looks. But in your report packet, you'll see our current documents, which is policy BJCD, which is the evaluation, how you can do it, BJ, which is the job description, and then BJCDR, which is the current form that we're wanting to change. One recommendation is, before you change the form, I would highly encourage you to look at your actual job description. Make sure that's what you want, so that the tool you're asking for will match that job description or be useful and relevant information.
How come it says a token board of education?
That's what I, in your, the, after your documents, after Freedoms, I have three documents from OROS. They say this public school, or something like that, I'm sure they look a little different, says that the top five, twenty-six dot R dot one. These are different examples of some evaluation tools, and then I was able to find the Etoka Public Schools superintendent evaluation form that they had, which is a similar OSSB form, but just updated more recently for them. I'm just giving you guys different examples of what some other people have used.
Okay. We're not changing anything tonight?
No, it's just a discussion.
Anybody have any questions on any of those? I don't. Item six then, it's finance, A is overview of district finances.
I'll have to quickly look, I do try to keep your documents in agenda order, just so you know, but the final one's kinda got some, you'll go one page back, orange and pink on it. You can see our projected fund balance, right now, we are, we have encumbered one point seven two one million in expenditures, which with that, figuring a one and a half percent revenue above our estimate needs, remember your, the estimate needs has a, is built on a ninety percent of what you collected last year. So calculating at one and a half percent, which is, I think, fairly conservative but reasonable, we'll have a carryover of one, or five hundred and fifty-four thousand, which will be three hundred and twenty-six thousand less than last year, than our carryover that we had last year. And we can operate the district with a five hundred thousand dollar carryover. Prefer not to go much lower than that, because then a whole lot more no answers and a whole lot less spending begins to come. But you can see there the general fund, looking to carry over around one ten on the building fund and four hundred, or four thousand on the child nutrition. If revenue comes in closer to a hundred percent of what we collected last year, you kinda see the two and a half percent, what a carryover would be, five percent above, and then ten percent where your carryover would be. I think with the economy, the way it's doing and the way I'm seeing some collections in, five percent is a little too high. We might, might be a two and a half percent, but right now, I think I'm pretty close to that one and a half. But this number right now does not include the OTC money. When I start seeing it getting paid to me, then I'll put it into the budget. We'll know a lot more on our budget, by the way, after January. February's meeting will be a lot closer, 'cause we'll know what collect, tax collections actually came in. If you look on the next page of that document, you see expenses and payroll trends. It's a lot of the same information, but overview, so you can see your appropriations. Our appropriation this year is ninety-one thousand less than it was last year. You can see our spending is up from last year, our payroll costs are up this year by ninety-five thousand dollars. Our, we needed to spend some money in classrooms and things like that this year, so our expenses, anything other than a person, is up thirty-four. is up thirty-four thousand.
What all, like what all did we get in the classrooms?
What, every, whatever teachers needed, uh, up to a hundred and fifty bucks. They just asked to just approve whatever they needed, and then as things have come up, you know, the library tables are in that number this year, all of those, all those different little things. But you can see our biggest burden is, is payroll, which is most districts. You would never operate a business like this, but this is how schools operate. You can kind of see how the, the expenses will climb, payroll costs will climb, this, as you, as we go through, because substitutes aren't figured into this number, because these are actual numbers. Bus driving, as people drive extra routes, or have to sub or something, something's not accounted for. Um, that will go up a little bit. For historical reference, um, we average, we need a reason we need our carryover. We spend from July to November, uh, for the last three years, anywhere from six hundred and fifty to seven hundred thousand dollars is what our costs are, between those, uh, July through November. In the same amount of time, we collect less than three hundred thousand. So, we have to operate to pay those bills using our carryover as our savings account, and then December, we start getting our, our money in and move forward.
And if we get the bond to pass, that helps on the lease purchase.
Bond will take the lease purchase, that's fifty thousand, um, on one of them, and I forget what the other one is. It will free up some of this budget a lot. Plus, it'll lower our operating cost, I mean, it'll, it will save us money. Any more questions?
B then is discussing a possible action concerning the one-time professional development stipend for third-time employees.
Our teachers have been putting in a lot of extra hours, and we've got some more coming for them. So, as you see the budget on that same page, is provided, um, some breakdowns of what any kind of professional development stipend that is deserved by our staff, um, what those would cost overall. One thing, when you look at the big picture, um, then you have the burdens that the district has to pay for that, the taxes that we pay, um, any of those amounts there. So if you look at, if everyone, if you get a five hundred dollar stipend, uh, it would cost fourteen thousand, uh, three seventy-five, figuring a twenty-five percent burden, which is right at what ours is. Seven fifty would be a twenty-one thousand, uh, five sixty-two thousand is twenty-eight thousand seven fifty, twelve fifty is thirty-five nine seventy-three, and then fifteen hundred and forty-three, uh, one twenty-five. We really need to stay above five hundred thousand on our carryovers, so we're not stressing us next year.
So what do you recommend?
Uh, I, we can do some fifty, a thousand, either one is perfectly fine. I would be a little leery of twelve fifty, um, just because it puts us too close with the unknowns.
The past is a thousand, hasn't it?
The last two years were a thousand, yes.
I'll take that's good.
We, we can, we can do it, we can budget it, and our teachers definitely deserve it. Our staff works very, very hard. So anything we can do is, is definitely needed.
I agree.
Can I make a motion, or they go see?
Go with a thousand?
Yeah.
Wilson, that would do that motion, right? Wilson?
Yes.
For Patrick?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. Who was the second? On behalf of our staff, thank you.
I have seen his discussion of possible action to approve a one-time stipend contract for all full-time employees.
And who didn't know the number, we didn't know what number to put in there, but the contract will now say a thousand.
Second term.
Second one?
Me.
Wilson?
Yes.
For Patrick?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Item seven then is building. A is discussion of possible action concerning installing a door on the west side of the ag building.
We, you already know, we put the bus in there, and we get to back that bus out, and it would be very nice, uh, to install a door like we have on the east side, on the west side. I remember back when, but we've got engineering designs and structural designs. I had originally got a bid for just, to do it, uh, a company out of Ponca City, um, for, right, or at, just under forty thousand. That was going to stress the local budget, because it's coming out of local money, uh, too far. But American Iron Construction, um, has submitted a bid at eighteen-six. It's a local person. Does this kind of work, and at that price, we, we need to do it.
Yes.
We will have to, before he does this, we'll have to have the electric and the gas lines removed. That's not in this bid, but most of it's already DCed, it's just actually taking it off the wall.
I'd make a motion, we approve that, that, low con, bid on that.
Second.
Wilson?
Yes.
For Patrick?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Item number eight then is A, a proposed executive session to discuss and, and to discuss the annual evaluation of Mr. James Miller Superintendent, Superintendent in accordance with provision of Oklahoma Statute twenty-five, section three oh seven, B one. And I will make the motion, go in the executive session at eight, oh, seven fifty-eight.
Wilson?
Yes.
For Patrick?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Tim, Tim?
Look at that second. Okay, that's right, item, okay. Item three is executive session, minutes compliance announcements. Only thing to discuss for item A, no votes taken. Item B then is vote to approve a superintendent evaluation. I'll make the motion, we approve that.
Second.
Wilson?
Yes.
For Patrick?
Yes.
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Is there anything else, anybody?
Yeah, I have a question. So, a while ago, we talked about the, basically, uh, the teachers, or whoever, um, we're talking about thirty-four thousand dollar amount, so what is that? And you said, you know, stuff in the classrooms, is this it right here in general?
No.
Okay.
No, no, that's the other.
Or do that?
Second page. It's this number right here.
So, what is that, is it, uh? Huh?
Just point out. Thirty-four two two two.
Yeah. So, that's, what, and what all did you say we've got with that, anything that's a hundred and fifty or?
That is, anything that is, that's everything in the entire district, that's not payroll.
Okay.
Every.
Can we get an itemized list of that?
Yeah, I mean, you already have it.
Okay.
It's been in your, every packet you have in the registry.
Right, but that, that's what I'm saying, but I want, I want a list of just that, just that alone by itself.
Okay.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
And I want to seek, so, when you said a while ago about the hundred and fifty dollars, and basically, if it's a hundred and fifty, they, they, they get it, or how, how does that work?
Yeah, if it's something they need, absolutely, they move a hundred and fifty, they need something for the classroom.
For a month, for a year.
It was just this year, for the year.
For the year.
Yeah.
Hundred and fifty dollars, one time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so this Apex General, or General Fund, that's that deal you was talking about, for that three two two two?
It will be, it will be all different through here.
But all this will add up to that?
Yeah.
It's a number of thirty-six, six seventy-six.
These are, you, you have to go through, okay. When you look at your encumbrance.
Are we still talking about the thirty-four thousand? I'd rather just have an itemized list out.
Okay, I agree.
That way we all know. All right, and how long, like, maybe, how long it'll take to get that done?
Pretty quick.
That'd be great.
So, next meeting, next week?
Last second, maybe like tomorrow.
Back then? No, or nothing else? Item nine, there's big business. No new business? Anything we need to sign in the registry?
Yep. Glad you're keeping your head.
Item number eleven, there's the adjournment, I make the adjournment at ten fifteen.
Second.